Line item four, approve agenda. Any discussion or change?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I asked to re-strike number twelve from the agenda. There's no transfers. And amend number thirteen to read resolution two thousand and twenty-five zero four three.
All the changes? Seeing none, or call for motion?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Trujillo?
Yes.
Chairman Tatum?
Yes.
Line item five, approve regular meeting minutes from our last meeting and April eighth meeting. Any discussion or changes? Seeing none, motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Trujillo?
Yes.
Chairman Tatum?
Yes. Line item six, recognize visitors. Online we have Mike Probine and Justin Menhart, DPA so far.
Tim Martinez, IT. Tom Vehill, Emergency Management.
Nate Sandoval, County Fire Marshal.
Audrey Smith, Colfax Gazette.
Rhett Trujillo, Chief Deputy Clerk.
Ms. Pankel.
Warden Regina Slade, Beale Maldonado Detention Center.
Brandy Deetz, Vice President of Grower Tone.
Leroy Sandoval, Finance Director.
Kristy Graham, Colfax County Assessor.
Lynn Stevens, Road Department.
Thank you all for coming. Public comments limited to three minutes. Do we have any? Need to beat?
Hi, my name is Brandy Deetz. I'm the Vice President of Grower Tone and the Colfax County Representative on the North Central Board. I just wanted to comment and give you an update on what I've been working on. I attended the April twenty-fourth North Central Board meeting. Some of the takeaways from the meeting are the WIN program. They have a new Program Director, Sarah Holt's cloth. They have requested an extension, a one-year extension on the WIN grant program. It's scheduled to end September twenty, this year, twenty twenty-five, but they're, they want to try to extend that. They've also, they're working on their relationship with our municipalities, trying to build that and strengthen those relationships. So they're having a Zoom call on May twenty-second at three thirty PM. I've sent out the invite to people across the county, to the municipalities, HR directors, to the schools, and some private employers so that they can build those relationships. We also, they also gave us an update on the said steering committee. We had the Colfax County SEDS meeting on, back in May, or not May, April. And they felt like there were a lot of good outcomes with that. In June, they'll have a compilation of what they've discovered through each of the county meetings. They'll have a report for the committee in, in June. And then, as far as Grower Tone goes, we've been doing some community outreach and ribbon cuttings for some of our businesses. There is a new Kitty's Closet Exchange on Second Street. Portillo's is going to have, be moving to a new location on Second Street. We're going to do a ribbon cutting for them on May nineteenth at eight AM. And then, there today, there is the WIN Job Fair in several locations, Las Vegas, Santa Fe, Taos, and Espanola, from three to six. And yesterday, there was a large fire south of town at Westernwood. We've reached out to them to let them know that we are available if they need any help. There is a task force headed up by Tim Hagaman, who's our Region Four rep from the New Mexico Economic Development Department. There is also somebody from workforce development involved in the task force so that we can lend any assistance to their employees if needed. And that is all that I have for right now.
Good morning, Commission. As you guys know, and as it was mentioned, we did have a fire begin yesterday. I just got a summary that I typed up for this with a little bit of operations and ongoings. So on, yesterday at approximately eleven forty hours, Colfax County Rapid Response and Raton Fire were dispatched to Westernwood Products for a reported loader fire. I responded immediately, following the tone, activating my emergency equipment and proceeding directly to the scene. Upon arrival as the first unit on scene, I conducted a size up and reported the following. A fully evolved front-end loader with multiple exposures, including a large structure, several stacks of wood shipping pallets. The pallets were already gassing off, indicating an imminent fire extension. Chief Burke, Raton Fire arrived shortly thereafter, and we began coordinating incoming fire units. A three sixty-degree assessment revealed very limited to difficult access to the seat of the fire. Combined with the extreme heat, these factors significantly hindered optimal apparatus placement. Crews had to improvise by pulling handlines around obstructions to make an effective attack. Fire ground operations, structure protection was prioritized. Crews executed coordination, interior and exterior attacks, successfully preventing significant damage to the adjacent building. Structure damage was limited to blistered paint on the exterior and loss of a single large garage door, an outcome considered a strong save under the circumstances. Due to the substantial fuel load, confined, it was a very confined layout, high temperature and a threat increasing winds, mutual aid was requested. Responding agencies, including Maxwell, Brent Track, Belmont, Simiron, and Simiron EMS, over fifty personnel were on scene at the height of the incident. The fire quickly extended into a tightly packed pallet stacks, approximately twenty feet high and several rows deep, and eventually into the southern portion of the county's rodeo grounds. Brush units were deployed and successfully contained the fire within small perimeter of the grounds. By approximately eighteen hundred hours, crews were able to gain the upper hand and transition into overhaul operations. Firefighters were rotated for rehabilitation and hydration. The strategy from that point included leveling and cooling the burning piles, layer by layer, and then burying remaining hot coals to fully extinguish them. By approximately twenty-three hundred hours, mutual aid units were released and returned to their districts. Rapid Response, Raton Fire, and I remained on scene to monitor for rekindle risk. Fire checks ensured that residual heat was insufficient to cause branding and with rising nighttime relative humidity, the scene was secured at zero one thirty hours. We did have some damage to apparatus. Several responding apparatus sustained damage from the extreme radiant heat. Documented damage includes cracked windows, bubble paint, pilling, department markings. Despite this, the operation was a significant success. No major injuries were reported among personnel, which speaks to the discipline, coordination, and situational awareness maintained throughout the incident. So ongoing efforts, crews were scheduled to return at zero eight this morning to continue cooling and monitoring. It must be noted that there were, that this fire was exacerbated, exacerbated by longstanding fire code violations and operational concerns at the facility. Chief Burke and I will initiate a formal review of these issues and working with relevant authorities to ensure compliance and risk reduction to emergency personnel and future incidences. About all I have for this report. I'll stand for questions.
Questions?
And if you guys are looking for me, I'll be out there majority of the day. And then just another note, next week, we have schedules for our departments to be inspected. So that'll be going on next week also. So I'll be in and out of the building.
One question, if I will, Nate. You mentioned that there were history or there had been some fire code violations and stuff. Is there any recourse or that from our perspective on that or follow-up?
At this time, no, we're actually looking into that. So when the departments go out to do their pre-plans, they noted several violations that should have been taken care of, i.e. just the layout of where they were putting all their piles. These pallets were stacked at least twenty foot high, several rows deep, and they were packed right next to the building, which caused us to have to protect that building. And then just access for us to get in there to do any kind of operations was really tough. We couldn't maneuver our trucks very well in there. And then, they have water tanks set up that used to be gas tanks, so they still had the markings for fuel, which led us to believe that we had tanks full of fuel, when in fact, they were just water. So those were violations also that he should have had those covered up. But in the past, there have been several attempts to have him organize better, have a better fire plan, which is one of the things I'm going to start looking into today is what their fire plan was, what their emergency procedures are. And we're going to go from there and identify what they need to do in order to make, make it safer for them, for one, because these pallets, as high as they were, could have collapsed on anybody with this, with the strong winds we get. And then during the fire scene, I mean, this fire behavior was, you know, unprecedented. I know talking with the emergency manager, it actually registered for them to start calling. The forestry started calling him and say, hey, we're getting a signature. Do you guys have something going on in the area? So.
Thank you.
I was up late.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners, Tom Vehill, Emergency Management. To tack on along with the excellent report from the Fire Marshal there, but also the lessons of the past week. Of course, we had the rain event and the subsequent power outages moving on into the dealings of yesterday. First off, I just want to say we have an outstanding region and the level of communication and coordination that's gone over in the past week between county offices, the Sheriff's Office, Road Department, Fire Marshal, county fire chiefs, municipal fire chiefs, and municipalities themselves, DOT, State Police. I don't see, I can't think of a way we could have communicated better over the last week. And a lot of things went far better than they could have. And I also need to include the utility operators in that as well. Kit Carson did an outstanding amount of work realizing the scope of their power outages, not just in Colfax County, but in four other counties. Being Black Lake alone, they had something like twenty poles down from the rain event. And for a small company like Kit Carson to have to replace twenty poles in, in two or three days, that's, that's a substantial lift, considering they're also fixing New Park and Red River and all the other places. So first off, and of course, the lessons from yesterday, outstanding amount of communication. Of course, the Fire Marshal was there on scene. I was in discussions with Incident Command on that one. Kind of the fun note on this one is, within a few minutes after the initial call-out for that fire at the sawmill, I got hit by NOAA, National Weather Service, Homeland Security, a number of other agencies. They've developed a satellite detection system for wildfires. It's actually part of the weather system. It was the original intent, but they found out that some of the sensors actually were really good at detecting wildfires or large heat blooms. And so all these agencies were calling me saying, hey, you have a very major heat bloom outside of Raton. Are you aware of it? Well, yeah, I'm aware of it. We have a sawmill burning. But, so again, it shows how technology has helped improve our communication as well. But the point I want to make is, over the past couple of days, through the weekend, I've had a number of people call me asking about the fire ban, and we should lift the fire ban because, you know, we had rain and everything's recovered. Yesterday, the prime example of the science of fuel moisture, a lot of folks don't understand, and how long it takes for fuels to recover when exposed to moisture. And while, you know, three, four days, four or five inches of rain is outstanding, it's not enough compared with the fuel loadings that we have in this county. And I've said it before, but again, to briefly go over it, we categorize fuel in number of, the amount of time it takes for them to gain humidity when exposed to humidity. So if you have a piece of fuel that's at six percent humidity, how long it takes for it to gain extra points of humidity to get wetter when exposed to that? And so what we have are the one-hour fuels. One-hour fuels are the grasses, the size of, you know, the hairs. Your ten-hour fuel, of course, that's that wind that's going to be happening too. Ten-hour fuels, size of small branches, your pinky. Hundred-hour fuels, size of your forearm. Thousand-hour fuels, size of your leg. Ten-thousand-hour fuels, size of your body. And so realizing ten thousand hours for that heavy log sitting out there in the forest to respond to moisture changes, that goes far beyond even that wonderful rainstorm that we had last week. And so yesterday was the prime example because on top of the fire that we had outside of Raton, there were two other fires caused by downed power lines in Simron Canyon. And of course, both of them were pretty much in nightmare spots. I'm sure Chief Todd can agree. Had we not had the moisture we had, obviously, we would have a major wildfire going on in Simron Canyon right now. So while the rain was beneficial, it wasn't enough to really alleviate the fire danger. And so that's kind of just the message I wanted to throw out this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. Appreciate you. Sure, any other public comment? Seeing none, we're going to move on. Question, action, approve expenditures.
I had one just question on the clerks, the purchase of the TV, what the utilization for that was going to be.
That is going to be for training purposes for pole workers and stuff as they come in. Also, when we had the training with the sheriff, that'll be utilized for that also.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have no further questions.
Vice Chair Kern?
No questions.
I have none. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Trujillo?
Yes.
Chairman Tatum?
Yes. Line item nine, discussion, action, financial report.
All right, I'll take it away from there. Good morning, Commissioners. I think we'll keep the financial report a little bit brief today as we have the budget workshop. After today's commission meeting, we'll get to have an opportunity to really get into the details on finances during that meeting. Some, some recent updates, though, on the audit. We did submit the majority of the remaining audit requests to the auditor through their portal. There is just a couple items on capital assets where we're just hammering out the last few details on those. On the subject of capital assets, as I was reconciling beginning balance, that was reported on FY twenty-three audited financial statements. I did find some errors where asset records had been duplicated, not in the system, but in the way the filters were done that were provided to the auditor. So I think there is some overstatements on the FY twenty-three audited financial statements that will have to be potentially restated or just adjusted in the FY twenty-four audit. But those are non-cash entries, so it is what it is.
So on that, Justin, what we found was that some assets were duplicated. So the value of capital assets was kind of double stated for the prior year audit, which was the six thirty twenty-three, right?
Correct.
And?
That was original cost of about two million and net of depreciation, it's about one point two million was the effect of that.
Okay, so that was the amounts, the amount that was doubled up, right?
Yes, so they had included the same asset in more than one asset category essentially.
Okay.
But the, the system is correct. It was just when they extracted their report and filtered by category, they were, they were included in multiple categories.
Okay, so the system was correct, but then what was provided to the auditors was kind of double stated, if you will, causing a material error in the six thirty twenty-two-three financial statements, which just means like Justin said earlier, that we would expect the auditors for six thirty twenty-four's audit to do a restatement, it's called, and basically just restate the June thirty twenty-three numbers to what they should have been within the twenty-four audit package, within the twenty-four audit, audited financial statements. And what that does is it creates a finding, of course. It sometimes can create a note in the auditor's opinion, but most of the time not. And like ninety-five percent of the time it doesn't. And then it does create a footnote that describes the restatement itself. And then the finding is a material weakness. So just so you all are aware that that was something that we caught and that will be corrected in the audit process for twenty-four.
Thank you. All right. But other than that, that's, that's the only remaining item, and we expect to have that fully out to the auditor in the next few days here by the end of the week. I am.
And so Justin, just real quick here, can you give the Commission a couple examples of the things that were pending that we provided to the auditors and if we've heard back from the auditors quite yet?
Yeah, so the biggest one would have been the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. That's one of the key requests that they select a major program. It will be the ARPA program that's selected for testing, so I went ahead and just provided them the detail for that fund as well. And there are various other requests like AP, so our search for unrecorded liabilities to, to report AP on the financial statements. And, and a few other small items like the OR chart and things like that, that were still standing here, provided those as well. And we did not hear back from the auditor yet. I did email them. I've not gotten a response, so I think I'll try to reach perhaps the partner instead of the senior in charge. Just, just in case that individual's on vacation.
Yeah, we can get on their schedule and just try to find out when they can block off some time to, to finish the audit.
And as, the way audits go is there's usually follow-up requests after their initial requests as they do their sampling and testing. So, yeah, we'll progress that and fulfill any requests as they come across our table. Okay, with that said, I'll just do a brief overview of cash and then budget here. You can see right now, there's just under twenty-three million dollars in cash in your governmental funds. That is up from the beginning of the year of eighteen point six. Once you deduct certain reimbursable grants, it's probably up around four hundred thousand or so. And about half of that, just under ten million dollars, is in the general fund, the remaining, or in other special revenue funds. And about half of that, uh, just under ten million dollars is in the general fund, the remaining or in other special revenue funds. Taking a look at the the budget. Uh, report here that shows the remaining budget balances here in column F. Uh, we have just a few weeks left in the year, so um. As long as these budget balances are over around, you know, thirteen percent or so, um. That means we're on track. So as we scan through uh, the general funds here. Um, you can see that uh, they all have sufficient budgets at a high level. Uh, just scrolling down. Uh, corrections, road are are good on their remaining budget, uh, fire. As well. Now, the recruitment funds, we've uh, cleaned these up, got them uh, to be fully expended. Watcher's tax has forty-three percent left, um. And then their their major grant funds uh, for which there are no, no issues that I see. Right, with that said, I'll stand for any, any questions uh, that the commissioners might have at this time.
I don't have a question, but just a comment. Uh, thank you, Justin, for all that you do. I do have a friend that works with NDFA and he reached out to me in the last few weeks asking about our audit and when it was gonna be submitted and. And I reassured him and he was passing it along that we are. Uh, getting it to the auditors and they're working on it. So I know we are on their radar, DFAs. But I that's come to be expected. That's all.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Appreciate it. Uh, seeing no further discussion. See, that is a discussion, not an action. Number ten, discussion, action, budget report.
And I I believe I did budget and finance uh, report together there, so I think we can move to the next item, which is the grant discussion.
Hey, sir. Item eleven, discussion, action, grant report.
Thank you, and I just have a a one uh, update, uh. Uh, we had submitted some reauthorizations uh, on a couple of special appropriations uh, for the road department. Uh, those were passed a few weeks ago. Um, and they now have officially, I can see the reauthorization, reauthorized grants have been. Uh, put into the system. It's fully official at this point. I know some people were. Were waiting to hear uh, back on those, so that extends it out to June thirty twenty-two-seven. For those grants to be uh, expended. For it's a uh, truck and a and a trailer uh, for the road department. And uh, Commissioner Truheel, do you have any other updates on other grants that you'd like to provide?
Yeah, I believe uh, the baby box for Safe Haven uh, is going to the city commission tonight, so I'll be. In attendance during their commission meeting to answer any questions or concerns they may have regarding that. Um. Leroy, I believe we did uh, purchase the vehicles for the senior center, right? Um, we're working on that. Those uh, grant appropriation, we're working on clean cleaning up or getting completed.
They're in the process of printing out the state contract, um. And the requisition has already put in, been put in the PO, so once we get the backup documentation to accounts payable. Um, they're gonna go pick up their vehicles and then we'll send in for reimbursement from the state, once we get the backup documentation.
Thank you. Um, we are working on closing up and drawing down a lot of other grants. Uh, we submitted everything to Delphi, right, for the. The re- that apron and everything.
So yesterday, me and Justin were gonna review the documents and submit it. Um, he was busy doing the budget. I was busy doing the budget adjustments, so. We are gonna submit that tomorrow afternoon.
Good.
And then we didn't, we sent in the re- or I sent in the reimbursement for AXX twenty-four, which is the hangar. And we're also gonna get, um. I can't remember the name of the grant off the top of my head, but we're gonna send in for the seven thousand for that and then the remainder. Um, but we're just waiting for this pay run to be done because we have to submit two more invoices with it.
So and the commissioners, what he's referencing there is the drawdown of some of the grants. We're trying to to get it where we're drawing down at least quarterly on these grants to show there's movement in action. So a lot of the drawdowns that are occurring right now are the Moles &amp; Corbin invoices that are done. So we're drawing down for the event center, paying off uh, Moles &amp; Corbin for that engineering work. Uh, getting all that taken care of. And then, um, some of the airport hangar design, et cetera, is being drawn down. So, uh, everything's looking good on our end regarding grants. And reporting. Any questions? That's all I have.
Vice Chair Kern.
No questions.
Seeing none, we'll move on.
Thank you, Leroy.
Line item twelve has been removed from the agenda. Line item thirteen, discussion, action, resolution, twenty-two-five dash oh-four-three. Budget adjustment, various funds.
Good morning, commission. Um, so this is kind of a lengthy budget adjustment. We did a bunch of meetings with all of the departments. Um, we're trying to get everything out of the over expended line items. So the first one is county property valuation, property fund twenty-two oh-three zero four eight-five. Has sufficient funds, whereas an increase in expenditures under cer- such circumstances. Is necessary and lawful to account for over expended line items in full-time positions. Para group health insurance, retiree healthcare workers compensation. The following should be made, an increase in expense to full-time positions, five thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars.
Leroy.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, uh, we've already read it all.
Okay.
Uh, so there's no need re-reading it. Uh, does anyone have any questions or discussion on the changes? Of the various funds and adjustments. Vice Chair.
I do not.
No, I do not. Thank you, Leroy, for. So.
Mr. Chair.
Uh. Oh, Audrey, yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
Go ahead.
Um, just a quick comment here, um, I haven't been tracking the the. Details, details of the bars, um, since we turned that over, um, but. Just kind of a word of caution that anytime you are increasing a line item, you have to decrease the line item. Um, or else it's gonna be coming out of cash balance. And I know everyone's aware of that, but I just wanted to kind of um, reiterate that point. Uh, that normally when we're doing bars, we will increase the revenue and the expense if the grant is coming in. And you know, the expense needs to be upped, um, or if there's an increase in overage in one line. Line item, it really needs to be coming out of another. Um, I think that. As everyone knows, this past year, the budget wasn't exactly set up correctly, so. Um, quite a bit is going to be probably shifting out of cash balance would be my guess. But that's just something that to be aware of and definitely in the future. Um, to not be spending recurring funds out of the cash balance. And so I think for FY twenty-six, we're gonna see a big um, change in in that piece of the puzzle. Um, but we can talk about that more in the budget workshop. But for the bars. Um, I would just remind everyone to be looking for if there's an increase, there should be. Or if there's an increase, there should be a decrease somewhere else, or if there needs to be, you know, additional grant funds coming in, that those. Revenues are also booked in accordance with the expenditures, so.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Yes, I'm ready to see this part of our meeting over. Uh, hopefully, in our budgeting, everyone will look at their line items most strenuously. And I do understand, though, not blaming the departments, there was lots of things went wrong when this budget was made. Uh, any further questions, comments? Seeing none, move on. Uh, or excuse me, motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Truheel.
Yes.
Chairman Tatum.
Yes. Line item fourteen, discussion, except, excuse me, discussion. Action, assessors, valuation and maintenance plan.
Good morning, Chairman Truheel, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. Again, my name is Christy Graham. I am the Covex County Assessor. You have received my property valuation and maintenance plan. If you have any questions, I stand for any questions.
Any questions?
No questions.
I do. Uh, I saw on here your countywide canvas is a little behind on the twenty-four out. And twenty-six in and out, where you guys gonna be? Uh, go ahead, I'll just.
Yes, so those are part of our reappraisal for twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then on the, um. I ask every year as far as the uh, mobile homes. But I just, I think when the, we are getting our collection rate with the assessors, or not with the with the treasurer's office. We're usually at ninety-six percent, and I I feel a lot of that is mobile homes, and I was wondering. Tell me again what your office is doing to remove some of those mobile homes off the tax rule.
Chris in the treasurer's office comes to us, and if she sees that mobile homes are ten plus years that haven't been paid. We do a tax rule and we take them off.
Okay.
Um, some have been destroyed, some have been moved, um. And they just don't wanna pay the taxes on it, the back taxes.
Okay.
Yeah, so we take a tax rule change and we get them off of there.
Is it only after the ten years that we're pulling?
Um, no, there's some that are like three, four years, uh, and they're pretty high taxes, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to get them off because they're never gonna pay them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alrighty, well, thank you. That answered uh, my questions. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Hey, thank you, ma'am.
Do you want me to give my quarterly or you want me to wait till?
I'll leave it up to the commission. Go ahead.
Okay, um, I sent you my quarterly report. Um, do you have any questions? I do wanna stress on, um, May fifth, I had the state come in and did my evaluation. And it went really good. It usually lasts like an hour. It lasted ten minutes, and they said we're doing our job. And then May ninth, I had my exit interview and same thing, ten minutes. They said my office is doing a very good job, so. We got a hundred percent on that. There was a couple of things that we gotta uh, change a little bit, but we're doing very well. Just wanted to stress that. Another thing is my two um, new appraisers just passed their test with a ninety-two. And a ninety-one, they are now appraiser threes. Um, as of today, we have one hundred and thirty-five protests. Um, what they are protesting is if they're getting a three percent, they happen to look at their notice of value. And it increased a three percent, and they didn't know how that worked, so they're calling in to ask that question. Um, another one is we did increase land values. We have to do that every so often, increase the land values.
So you had a tripling and.
Yeah.
Protest.
Yeah, yeah, um, let's see what else. Um, of course, our veterans went from four thousand to ten thousand. Um, it didn't hurt us too much because if you look on my evaluation uh, report, sixty-nine percent were up. So I think we're gonna be okay, even though that veterans went that high. Um, also, Chris Sandlin has taken over that E-nine-one-one. He has done an ex- excellent job. Um, people have really called into him and he's getting those addresses to him and he's doing, he's gotten a lot of compliments on it. And Si, you were one that was one that said he was doing a really good job, so thank you.
Oh, yes, thank you. He's uh, yeah, we had some questions and and concerns reaching out and.
Right.
Resolve it all, so thank you.
That's about it. Any questions on the quarterly?
No.
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
I move to approve the ass- assessor's valuation maintenance plan.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Truheel.
Yes.
Chairman Tatum.
Yes. Line item fifteen, discussion, action, cancellation of RFP twenty-two-five dash oh-one. Financial audit services. Any discussion?
Good, Ms. Avila. She's, oh, another day.
Sorry, good morning. Um, I did put a memo on uh, on the table, just to let you all know. That, yeah, we did have a few firms that did reach out to us, I think about maybe four or five, um, just nothing was turned in. Uh, I also got ahold of uh, Chris Garner, just to kind of get some clarification on what I can do, because we're kind of cutting it close right now. Um, as far as, you know, a deadline and everything, um, he did give me a couple firms to reach out to. Um, again, I haven't received any response from anybody. So I'm still trying. Um, he did tell me if I didn't get anything today, because I did reach out to somebody this morning. Um, just to let him know and we can, I don't know, still, still try to get ahold of somebody. I have a list from the OSA website, um, so that's what I'm going off of. So if you guys have any questions or anything.
Yeah. Ms. Avila, so you had mentioned before that as long as we are below the sixty thousand dollar procurement, uh, new RFP. P is not needed, is that?
Right, right, yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot that. Um, he did mention that, because I thought we were gonna have to go up for RFP again. And so he did say that because it's a professional services contract, we only need one, um, basically one quote. If it's under sixty thousand, and it should be under sixty thousand. So, but yeah, I'm I'm like I said, I'm trying to reach out to firms to to get a quote, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Danielle, are there any, um, on state contract?
You know what, I'm not too sh- I can look. I'll I'll look. I'm sorry, I didn't think about that. I was just worried about the RFP.
Sure.
So, no, I'll I'll take a look at that.
Okay, thanks.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to uh, make a couple of comments on this topic, um. The audits do have to go out for procurement and not on state contractors, to answer your question, Commissioner, and we don't have. On auditors on state contract for the external annual audits. Um, I believe PB and H, Chris Garner's firm that he's at is, um. Has to rotate this year. And so that's why he can't continue. Um, and then the third thing that I just wanted to mention is that, um. Now that we've seen that there hasn't been a response, um, I can definitely reach out to some firms and. See if, you know, try to help Danielle with it, so see if we can get some responses.
That'd be great, Audrey, thank you.
Sure.
Appreciate your assistance. All right. Motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the cancellation of RFP twenty-two-five dash zero one.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Truheel.
Yes.
Chairman Tatum.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Line item sixteen, discussion, action, approval to advertise for RFB. Twenty-two-five dash oh-one, Angel Fire Hangar Construction Containment Pad.
Mr. Chairman, we'll have Mike Probine online.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Uh, this is the uh, request to uh, publish the advertisement for beds for the uh, hangar. Project up at the Angel Fire Airport. Included in the work is the uh, new uh, four-unit hangar. Uh, replacement of the hangar door on the existing hangar. Uh, and construction of a cont- fuel uh, containment pad at the fuel farm. Also, we have in there is a a a canopy over the fuel dispensers. Uh, the containment pad um, is under a separate state uh, grant. Uh, there was a state grant for the canopy, uh, which we will uh, reapply to state aviation on that. Uh, shortly. Um, and they've agreed to that, and the, of course, the hangar and the doors is under the uh, uh, existing uh, state. Uh, grant, uh, part of the House Bill two money that state aviation received. Uh, our plan is to advertise uh, this Sunday for bids. Um, we are having an issue uh, getting the state wait rates. At Workforce Solutions, uh, and working with Mr. Sandoval, getting access into that system and uh, seeing what the uh. Uh, issue is there, so we'll work through that this week. Um, and then we expect to open bids on the twenty-fourth of June. Uh, they're at the county building, and we will have a uh, a pre-bid conference at the airport on June third, uh, ten-thirty in the morning. Um, stand for any questions?
Uh, Vice Chair Kern.
No questions.
You think we'll get it done, Mike? As far as get the bids and everything done this summer?
Uh, Mister Chair, uh, Commissioner, uh, we've had several, uh, firms indicate interest. I know there's one, uh, one firm that's actually out of Texas that's, uh, been, uh, communicating with the village, um, as far as, uh, their, uh, interest. Uh, we sure hope so. Um, we're, we're a little worried about budget, but we've set up the, uh, bid proposal and, uh, bid lots. With the hangar doors, the priority, the hangar second, and then the, the containment pad and the, um, uh, shade structure, the, actually, it's a snow structure, show, snow uh, canopy is, is the final, uh, priority, is the lower priorities. Uh, so we'll, we can hopefully fit the, uh, bid into the money available is our plan. Uh, hopefully we'll get some good bids. Hopefully we have more than one bid. Uh, back to your question, uh, yeah, we have till June of, uh, twenty twenty-five to complete the work and so we're, uh, we're hopeful we can get at least the concrete foundations in this, this, this summer, fall. Um, and, uh, continue with the building, uh, next spring if we need to.
You said June of twenty-five or twenty-six?
Twenty-six, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Yes, sir.
You'd say twenty-five, didn't you? Okay. Are we, are, are we filing through with all the con- controversy of the hangar location?
Yes.
Uh, Mister Chairman Commissioners, yes, we've, uh, relocated the hangar, um. The, uh, village has agreed to, uh, uh, perform any, uh, regrading of the taxiway reconstruction of the taxi, uh, way down at that end on the, on that hangar area uh, with their own forces or with their, with their funds. That work is not included in the, in this bid. But we, we are, I think, uh, settled on that.
All right. That was my understanding in the last meeting. I just wanted to make sure nothing else came up. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion?
I'm.
Seeing none?
I make a motion to uh, approve RFB twenty twenty-five oh one.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Trujillo?
Yes.
Chairman Tatum?
Yes. Line item seventeen, discussion action, OMA violations, corrective statement to cure, to cure the OMA violations and approve the November twenty twenty-four emergency meeting minutes.
Uh, Mister Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So, uh, so the, yeah, so, uh, uh, you all were, uh, sent a statement, uh, regarding this, uh, in advance of this meeting. So basically what happened was there was a, uh, there's an emergency meeting that was held on Friday, November eighth. Um, the, uh, uh, based on some weather issues that were taking place. Um, and there was a, there was a complaint filed, uh, regarding, um, whether or not that meeting was done pursuant to the Open Meetings Act. The Nebraska DOJ, uh, went through and, and analyzed documents that are on the website. Um, they came to the conclusion that, uh, that was not violated with regard to the November eighth, twenty twenty-four meeting, uh, that took place. I will note, I, that in my personal assessment uh, of what happened, I think there were some best practices that could have been observed, uh, despite the fact that there were no technical violations of the Open Meetings Act on that day. Um, and, and I think, and I think, you know, we've all, we've all learned from some things that happened there. Um, but, but in reviewing the, the documents that are on the, on the website, the NMDOJ uh, had a, had a question about whether or not there was a meeting that took place on November fifth, uh, which would have been Tuesday prior to that Friday, November eighth. Um, and if there was a meeting that took place on November fifth, then there would have been a violation because the agenda wasn't ever posted to the website, even if it was an emergency meeting, at some point it would need to be posted, plus the minutes were never approved after looking into the matter. However, it appears that there in fact was, I've, I've talked to everybody involved, there, that there was no meeting that took place on November fifth. November fifth was election day. It's a day that I think people would remember if there was a meeting, uh, on that day. And, uh, and so this is, this is a statement, and actually the, the title of the statement, uh, we should strike the words corrective action, just be statement regarding open meeting issues regard, uh, related to emergency meeting in November twenty twenty-four. And, uh, it just simply memorializes uh, the fact, uh, so that this could be sent back to the Nebraska Department of Justice, allowing them to close their file. Um, that the, uh, that there was, uh, acknowledging what their, what their ruling was with regard to November eighth, no action, no corrective action needs to be taken with regard to November, November eighth, but also making clear that there was, uh, no meeting that took place on November fifth uh, twenty twenty-four, uh, which was Tuesday and it was, uh, general election day that day. And so, um, uh, so basically that's the, that's the foundation for this.
Right, thank you, sir. Any further questions, comments?
No, sir. I would, I would state that I would probably expect to see more from OMA. Uh, in our letter that we received and forwarded along to you guys, it does state that we are under scrutiny. We have been turned in multiple times by an individual, uh, it's public record, they can choose to request them, find out who it is, but, um, so more is probably gonna be coming, just to, is what it said in the letter. So just wanted to keep the commission informed of that.
And, 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 and all this is stuff based on the, on things that happened.
Prior.
Prior, exactly.
Correct.
Yes, but it, um, uh, but, uh, uh, given that, uh, uh, Commissioners, um, Trujillo and Kern were both on the commission at that time and, and I believe um, the matters of the emergency meeting were issues that, uh, the chairman was following, even though he wasn't on the, he wasn't, he was being elected to the commission on November fifth. Uh, was Commissioner, uh, elect uh, November eighth, uh, just, just if, if each of you could, could give your recollection as to whether or not there was a meeting on November fifth or not on election day.
Was not.
There was, there was no. Wasn't one.
Was no meeting on election day.
Okay, very well. And, uh, and I do know that the, the then county clerk, uh, who is now the chief deputy, uh, was here as well. She would have been required to leave administering the election and, uh, come over for the emergency meeting. Um, so, uh, there, there that there was no meeting on that day? Okay.
Very good. I think there would have been a nine-one-one call from the county clerk at that time if we would have had an emergency meeting on that day.
Absolutely. Well, okay, yeah, so then it would just be a question then of, of the commission approving this statement.
Right, yes. Motion to approve.
I move to approve the statement.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Trujillo?
Yes.
Chairman Tatum?
Yes. Line item eighteen, discussion Aggie County Roads Bridge of State.
Yes, uh, Commissioners, Chairman, um, I believe there was an email sent to the commission. Um, as of yesterday, we did, I did receive planks for decking for the bridge and and to fill in some wing wall that has fell over and washed out. Um, we plan on on working on the A six bridge as far as replacing some planks at the moment that are rotted out and have a few holes in them. And filling the, the approach on the north end of that bridge. Um, the wing wall on that side has rotted out. So, um, I was very short of having sixteen-foot plank. Um, there, there are about sixteen-foot decking and I didn't want to waste a bunch of our twenty-foot for that decking. But I did receive a load yesterday. And same as the A sixty-two bridge on Bridge Road, um, basically the same thing, redocking the best we can on that bridge and the approach as well. Uh, the wing wall, ki- kind of in the same area as the A six bridge and filling in that hole on that approach. That bridge does have streamers on it, so we didn't want to pull the streamers out and then be short, short of lumber and then have to put old boards back and then come back and redo the project, so want to make sure we have everything when we go to do it to, to hopefully complete it best we can at that moment. And as far as the Long Concrete Bridge just east of Maxwell, I don't know if Mike Probine has an update on that.
Mister Probine?
Uh, Mister Chairman Commissioners, uh, we're working on the task order and I should have that to you next week for the, uh, improvements to that wor- uh, that bridge, the maintenance work on that. So I apologize, I'm getting a little longer than the chat up, but we'd have a task order.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
I will state, uh, I have a, just a quick comment update on the Blosser Gap. Uh, I've been working with Mike Probine and, uh, we're working out with Army Corps of Engineers to, to get all that set up re, uh, Molsen Corbin had to get a an agent on behalf to work for the county. Uh, Mike, I don't know if you wanted to speak anymore to that or not, since we're doing a, a bridge update.
Uh, yes, sir, uh, quickly, uh, Mister Chairman Commissioners, uh, I did go and check the, uh, temporary water crossing after the big rain event and, uh, that appears to be holding well. Talked to some of the, uh, I guess a couple of the ranchers drove by while we were there. They indicated that the, uh, water stayed below the, uh, that roadway, uh, did not overtop. That's good news. Uh, Howard, on the, uh, update on the actual permanent construction, we submitted all the environmental and the cultural resources reports to the Corps of Engineers and to SHIPO. Uh, we did get a response this morning from, uh, the Corps that they did receive and that they, uh, will be reviewing uh, are submitted to the Corps. So hopefully, uh, we think that'll take a couple of weeks for the review. Hopefully there's no uh, real re- revisions. We think we've been complete and re- and, uh, responded with their requests, but I'll update the commission as, as we go along. We would like to advertise this project. We were hoping for May. Uh, we come back to you, probably it's gonna be June, I guess, before we request, uh, advertisement approval.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Uh, Glenn, have y'all started evaluations on the rest of the bridges?
Um, I haven't had the chance to yet. Um, it is definitely on my list.
Okay, I'd like a list of the bridges and what roads condition when y'all get to it. I realize you're two men down till Friday for schooling. And, uh, but, all right, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
See you later. Okay. We, most, we don't, uh, discussion only, number eighteen. Line item nineteen, discussion action MOU between Kit Carson and Colfax County Sheriff's Office.
Good morning, uh, Chairman, Commission, ladies and gentlemen of the obvi- audience. Uh, so what you have before you is an MOU between the sheriff's office and Kit Carson Internet uh, in exchange for putting their hardware in the county building, um, up on Touch Me Knot. They are providing us free internet, uh, for that location for the public safety repeater in exchange for using our, that generator. Uh, that MOU was submitted to the attorney for his approval as well.
Okay. I do have a quick question, sure. Uh, Mister Chairman, if that's all right?
Yep.
Um, I thought this was what Bermejo was providing, was the internet service or was it the IT?
They are providing the IT and the internet connectivity for the cameras, the tunnel to whatever Mister Stanball works on. But the actual service is going to be provided by Kit Carson.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, since we're talking about that tower up there, I was just gonna ask, how's the generator?
Uh, the generator, um, had a massive failure the second time it was supposed to start up. I did get a purchase order and Cummins had it out there to find out why it didn't start.
Okay, thank you. And then just, uh, just a quick comment. Leroy, if you hear us, we need to, with this MOU, need to copy the insurance side of things. So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
With all the hookup, do you have manual override to start it manually?
Yes, sir.
So, and did that operate and work or it completely failed?
It completely failed, so they're sending the, the techs out.
Okay.
Then it should be covered under warranty, but we got the purchase order uh, for the amount quoted just in case, but it should be covered on the warranty and it shouldn't cost us anything, but.
Sounds good. Attorney, do you have any comment on your end? Total? All right. Motion?
Sorry, motion?
I'll second.
Good.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Trujillo?
Yes.
Chairman Tatum?
Yes. Line item twenty, discussion action, five percent re- retention stipends, certified law enforcement and court security.
Thanks. Yes, sir, uh, included in your packet that I, I submitted, um, I sent the, uh, budget request form showing what five percent of each certified and court security, uh, officer makes. That is five percent of their salary, which is within state statute. Um, that allows us to pay and we were able to find that funding within our budget. Um, and then as well as an updated retention stipend agreement for the individuals, uh, should the commission approve this. My goal at this point is to try to retain what we have um, with this retention. I'll stand for any questions.
Vice Chair?
I don't have any questions. Um, I know we, we've gone back and forth with, with what to do to, to try to retain our, uh, our staffing and, uh, I think this is a good idea. The sheriff is working with it, when, within his budget. And, uh, we all know that we're way behind on salaries as far as law enforcement goes.
Mission.
I think it's, I, I'm, I'm good with it overall. I think you're generous on the, you know, paying it back on the, you know, you're prorating it out each month, so there's, I would probably go a little harsher on that to, to at least make them pay an extra month back or something, so there's, but I'm fine with it as it states, so. Thank you.
Motion?
I move to approve.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Trujillo?
Yes.
Chairman Tatum?
Yes. Line item twenty-one, discussion action, transition to bi-weekly payroll for, from semi-month.
Uh, thank you for approval of the stipends. Uh, the next one is, uh, a lot of research on transitioning from how we currently pay by pay period, uh, and going to bi-weekly pay. Uh, I did work with, um, again, the county attorney on this. Uh, one of the big issues that we run into with currently how we pay uh, using this pay period as an example, we had to turn our time sheets in on the seventh, I believe. Any overtime incurred between now and the next pay period were in violation of federal law potentially for not paying out their overtime within fourteen days. So that puts the county in a huge uh, potential situation for, uh, a lawsuit potentially. Um, especially when it comes to public safety. Um, I have reached out to each department head either by phone or talked to them in person, uh, everybody, um, is in favor of changing to this. Uh, this would also work with, uh, um, our reimbursements from FEMA. Uh, when we do have our big events, uh, it takes a lot of work to convert overtime hours to the way we currently pay in order to get everything submitted, submitted to the state for our reimbursement from FEMA. This way we fall in line with state government, federal government. It should streamline that process. Um, tremendously, I'm sure for Tom, I did speak with Tom about this as well. Um, it would also allow public safety specifically to cut our overtime costs uh, and allow us to do some different things with our scheduling to provide better coverage for the community. Um, so those are, those are the big, the big, uh, portions, um, that I think this would be important. Uh, the other recommendation uh, in doing this would be to follow the state of New Mexico's, uh, payroll calendar, which I included in the packet. Uh, it indicates in, in yellow on those numbers, um, on the, the. Uh, it indicates in, in yellow on those numbers, um, on the, the paydays. And then the pay period ending, uh, in blue, so everybody would be getting. Uh, paid again. Uh, biweekly instead of by pay period. This increases, um. The Danielle work only by two pay periods. The deductions still come out in the twenty-four pay period, pay scale the way we do it now. So there's two extra paychecks where it's just salary, so nobody's losing any money. I know that was the big concern. Uh, from conversations that I had, that was a lot of reasoning for why this was never wanted to be done before, it was people were gonna lose money. Um, we're actually not gonna lose money. Uh, the good thing about following this schedule is. There's three pay periods in January, which is right after Christmas, when a lot of families need that extra money right after the holiday. And in August, when, uh, people are getting ready for their children to go back to school. Um, so I think that's a win-win there as well. Um, if we were to do this upon a commission approval, the transition would be. Um. Ms. Avila would, uh. Do a pay run on June twenty-seventh, so there would be three days where we would be short on a pay period. Uh, and then we would go right into, through July where we would start with the biweekly pay. If this were approved today, then it gives everybody plenty of notice to plan for that shortage, whether that's making arrangements with creditors or. Their banks or to plan for that. Uh, with that, that's all I have, uh, I did speak with Ms. Avila as well. Um, and she is in support of this, and if you have anything to say.
Sheriff and I, we've gone over this a few times, um. I, I, I do, I, I do feel comfortable, you know, making this transition, um, that was, of course, one of my questions is. Um. Personally, are we gonna lose money? And the way it's spread out, everything's gonna be spread out, basically, and of course, every two weeks we get paid, um. And then, yeah, there are those three, you know, those couple of months where we do get, you know, that extra paycheck, no deductions are being taken out, which is also, you know. Of course, good for us, um. Since I've been in payroll and H R, I've had. Some question whenever we do have, um, new hires is, um, okay, so we're salary. If we work ninety hours, do we get paid for ninety hours? And, I mean. The answer is, you know, basically, we just get paid for the straight, if we work eighty hours, we get paid for the straight salary, ninety hours, no matter to what it is, if we, we just get paid for that straight amount. Because we are, you know, salary, um. I, I feel okay with this transition and, you know. Whatever may come forward, so. No, I'm, I'm okay with it.
I personally see no problem with it. Vice Chair?
I, I totally support it, we, we looked at doing this years ago when I was the manager and had some roadblocks. Um. I just think it's, it's the right thing to do.
Yes, sir, no, I agree, I agree, this is the right thing to do and, and to the county employees, just please plan ahead, you know what I mean, to, to understand that the. Checks will just adjust slightly, but over the full year, everything will remain the same. So there should be plenty of time, it's now May, this won't go into effect till July, is that correct?
Correct, sir.
So, under June.
And, yeah, and, and if I could, just, just, just cause I, I kind of worked them a little bit to kind of map out, probably what we're looking at is. In June, everybody, uh. Right now gets paid on the fifteenth. Which is a Sunday, so effectively the sixteenth. The next pay period would normally run the sixteenth through the thirtieth. What we would do is, as a transition, people would get paid on the twenty-seventh. I, I'm, I'm sorry, that pay period would close up the twenty-seventh. Uh, and then people would get paid on the fourth. For that, so that's, that's, that's the transitional one. Uh, as we're moving from one to the other. And then. And then after that, then, that next pay period. Uh. Picks starts on the thirtieth. And ends on the eleventh, and then people get paid on the eighteenth. So that, so that what'll be happening then going forward, so that's, those are the two ones that get us to that transition. Uh, and, and, uh, and then after that, it's kind of smooth sailing. Uh, right, and so then the, the advantage that'll happen. Uh, for, for the county, as well as specifically for, for Danielle and her department. Is that instead of the pay period ends today, pay us today. Is gonna be the pay period ends one Friday, you get paid the next Friday. So then she actually will have that entire week to be able to process everything, make sure all of the, all of the leave, all of the overtime, everything is accounted for. Gets put in the system. Uh, and, and so then, one, one Friday ends, closes a biweekly pay period, the next Friday people get paid, the next Friday closes the next biweekly pay period, the next Friday people get paid. So it, it provides a more predictable schedule, uh, in terms of the administration of it. But that would be the transition, would be the end of June, beginning of July.
One thing, um, also. We had discussed before is, if somebody receives a clothing allowance and they happen to, um. Either, you know, let go or retire or something like that, and they have to pay a portion of that back, I'm actually able to go in. And take it from their last paycheck. Rather than, kind of sometimes now, we're kind of being left as, okay, they're already gone, and we can send them a letter saying, well, you owe. Such and such back, and sometimes that doesn't happen. So I think that would, that would work definitely here too.
Sounds good, that means you'll have more time to do more work. County, yes, sir.
And I agree too, I think this is something that needs to happen, um, if you're gonna be like software. And you're gonna train our staff on what to do or.
Right, software we're gonna get and. Well, right now, we'll just still be doing the time sheets, we're just gonna be turning them in on a different date, uh, I know at some point. Uh, they're, we're just, we're doing it now, it's just that we, we're paying right now.
Any further comment? Mister Be Hill?
This will help on the emergency side of things, it seems like every disaster we have happens again. Without our time to that pay period. We have lost money because of all of that. An extra thirty hours on top of that. Sometimes that, we've been able to go back and backtrack that money. Other times we haven't, but as the sheriff was saying, we've lost money on the reimburseals in particular. Because of that dead zone, uh, we haven't been able to fully justify the FEMA standards as to how we fare.
Okay, thank you. Any further? Motion to approve?
Yeah, I, I'd like to make a motion to approve, but I'd also like to thank, um, the sheriff. Daniel and, and all staff that were involved in, in doing the, the homework on this and, and making this as simple a transition as possible, so. Took some effort, so thank you.
Thank you.
Second? Roll call?
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Trufill?
Yes.
Chairman Tatum?
Yes. Line item twenty-two, discussion action, Colfax County Groundwater Project, Ziegler Geologic. Consulting LLC, Kate Ziegler, P H D.
Good morning, Mister Chair and Commissioners, um, are y'all able to hear me all right?
Yes, ma'am, loud and clear.
Thank you. Um, I'm outside, so I do apologize for the wind noise, um, just. Very briefly, y'all have, um, all of the report with the exception of the three final geologic maps, which should be coming to you within the next week. Um, and everything is, is there for y'all to look over. Basically, I don't think it's anything y'all don't already know as a county, that we're, you know, we're facing prolonged drought and the pressures that that have on our water tables. We have many different water tables in Colfax County, um, y'all are geologically complex and. That makes it fun and interesting to, to work on piecing this all together. Um, so we, we did all of the data collection for y'all, which is reported in there, the static water level measurements, chemistry and the recharge potential. As well, as, well as creating, um, a small erosion control feature on the Sobal Circle dot ranch. And having a workshop to share what we did there, and that's gonna be a long-term monitoring project. Um. But, you know, basically, it is the bad news of water tables continuing to, to decline because of drought, um, in various. That puts various pressures on the water tables, both shallow and deep aquifer systems. Um, concerns for how that may start to change water quality in a lot of wells as the aquifers diminish over time. And then being mindful of, um, from the work that we're involved in, uh, to the south of y'all in Moran San Miguel. With the Hermits Peak Calf Canyon Fire Scar is being mindful of. Potential for fire to have extremely detrimental impacts on your groundwater resources. Um. More than happy to answer any questions y'all have, y'all may have about the report as it stands now, um, and would just like to. Um, suggest on the behalf of the stakeholders that we've been working with on and off for several years now, that. Um, I think there is a collective desire to continue groundwater monitoring in some capacity within the county, I know we've got. Concerns starting to really develop like up in the Monano Valley. Um, and so just hopeful that we can continue to assist and support the county. The residents, the communities as best we can going forward, and thank you so much for the opportunity to, to do this work for y'all. Um, and we hope that we can continue to partner with y'all.
Thank you, any question?
No questions, just like to thank Doctor Ziegler and her team, um, this is invaluable information and, and, uh. I would hope that the rest of the commission would continue to support these efforts because I think, uh. Obviously, we need to know what's going on, water is essential.
Yes, thank you, Miss Ziegler, for everything, um, and the county will make this report available to the public if anyone would like to read it or see it. Um. Just also a special thank you to the, to the legislators, they are the ones that actually provided the funding to pay for this. Um, this is a grant that we are working on wrapping up right now currently, so just, uh, thank you to them. And, uh, there's nothing further, Mister Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve. Just the, the invoice for. Doctor Ziegler and Ziegler Geologic.
Okay.
Second?
Roll call?
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Trufill?
Yes.
Chairman Tatum?
Yes. Line item twenty-three, discussion action agreement for temporary crossing of the Chicarica Creek. Crossing A eleven. With the estate of Alice Moore and Wesley Bryant Mack.
Uh, Commissioners, this is being brought forward by me as acting county manager, um, this was something that had been. Requested, uh, by the landowner from the prior. County manager that had not. Gotten completed, um, bringing it to you, uh. The estate of Alice Moore and Wesley Mack have incurred. Extra costs. Outside of the county, just as far as putting up fencing. Et cetera, to keep their cattle in when they requested due to the road being moved, that the county provided this, the county had not done so. Um. And part of this too, the landowners wanted an agreement in place setting an end date for when that low water crossing would be removed. Uh, if not, uh, renegotiated at that point. Uh, so I brought this lease forward and working with Mister Proline, we believe that a year from when this. This. Uh, agreement is signed. That we should have the bridge completed and the low water crossing removed.
Questions?
I would like to make the motion if there's no other. I'd like to, and commission, what the motion I'm gonna make is ask that it be paid out of the general fund. If there's any objection to that. Hearing none, I'll go ahead and make a motion. To approve the agreement for the tempor- temporary crossing of the Chicarica Creek Crossing A eleven with the estate of Alice. Moore slash Wesley Bryant Mack, and that to be paid out of the general fund.
Second?
Roll call?
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Trufill?
Yes.
Chairman Tatum?
Yes. Line item twenty-four, discussion action M O U between Colfax County and Village Evangel Fire regarding grant match. And the extra A X X cost.
Commissioners, um. This was in discussion with the, uh. Village Evangel Fire requested an M O U, uh, they had some. Issues going on with their attorney and just to make sure. We're not being held up, uh, I worked with our attorney, Mister Sotos, to. Soto. To draw up this, uh, agreement to kind of cover a variety of stuff we discussed in prior meetings. This is gonna include the grant match for the advertising grant and how we're going to. Uh, they're gonna build a county, the county will build a state. Uh, once we receive m- the money, we will reimburse the village for eighty percent of that cost. And then the. They'll also cover the additional grant match for the. Rising grant. Which is a little over five thousand dollars. And also they will cover the cost of the repositioning dirt work and related costs to the hanger being moved. Can I stand for any questions on that?
That's as I understood it, I just wanted to confirm earlier on the hanger and Mister Proline did that. Uh, Vice Chair, any comment or question?
No, no questions.
Any motion?
So moved.
Second? Roll call?
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Trufill?
Yes.
Chairman Tatum?
Yes. Line item twenty-five, discussion action quarterly report, let's see, the successor already did hers, Clark?
Um, I sent my report to you guys, I stand for any questions?
Vice Chair?
No questions, thank you, sir.
Commissioner? None, I have none, well, you already answered mine, I told you. Uh, being. None, motion to, or do, do them all at once?
Just do them all.
All right, Treasurer? Mister Alfonso.
Hello, Commissioners, Madam Quick, um, I sent mine also, so I'm here for any questions as well.
I have one question. Also, can you just briefly describe what that one point four million was?
Um, it was a property tax payment from a, um, tax servicing company, and so what it is is, um. You know, everyone finances their homes to different banks and all this stuff, and what it is, is all these banks. Send it into that place and then they send us a lump sum of all that.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it, and then I just want to thank you for meeting, uh, and just let the commission know. I believe, what is it, weekly or every two weeks you and Leroy meet?
Uh, we've been doing weekly, yeah, so, and I mean, if there's days where we don't really have anything, we'll email each other and let each other know, but we, we set it up for weekly.
Yeah, no, there's been a lot of good communication between the finance and the treasurer to make sure. Uh, we're reporting everything back and forth and there's just good communication, so I just want to thank you for your time that you're taking with that, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Alfonso.
Thank you.
Vice Chair?
No question.
I have none.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Sheriff?
Yeah, I submitted my report, is there any question you have for me? Because there's a lot there.
There's a lot to digest.
Yeah.
I don't have any. You what? I don't have any questions?
I have none either.
Uh, I, I will touch on a couple of things, we should be taking delivery of our last four vehicles by the end of the month. From last year's capital, so we should have a. A pretty good fleet back in place. Um. The detention center, we're giving two trucks to, we've got one worked out for maintenance, one for I T. And. We're gonna be, probably will have a couple that we could offer to volunteer fire. Um, they're higher mileage, but they already have the, the sirens and the light bars and everything, you just have to change your light packs out. Um, and then graphic them however you want, I'll have a number for that here soon. And Maxwell Public Schools actually asked. If we would be willing to donate or transfer a vehicle to them, I think we'll, we may have one. Available for the school as well, and then there's a couple that. Probably just need to go to auction. That's all I have.
All right, sir, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Legal?
Oh, I was gonna have Mister Sotos on, uh. If there's anything you've cared to share as far as legal goes, uh. Any, what you can talk about, if we have any current lawsuits or, or anything like that?
Yeah, I generally subscribe to the fact that I have the right to win silence.
There you go.
Yeah.
Spoken like a true lawyer.
Or any other legal, uh, concerns, changes that you see that the commission might need to know?
Yeah, no, I, I actually, I, you know, I think, I think things are, are, are plugging away pretty well. It's, you know, I still, I, I still consider us to be in, in kind of a transition phase until we get a permanent county manager, uh, in place. Uh, but the, um, uh, you know, trying to, we're at this point, working to see how many of the outstanding lawsuits we can, we can resolve, actually been able to resolve, uh, close out, uh, two cases dealing with eminent domain from the, uh, New Mexico Department of Transportation. Um, where, where they include the county, uh, regardless of the county's interest in it and whatnot, but I, I've been able to navigate those and, and both those have been closed out. Uh, and then, um, we do have the, uh, some of the, uh, outstanding issues from, uh, one of the U Park residents that, uh, simply continues on a regular basis. Um, and it's, it's somewhere between frustrating and a sign of job security on my part, uh, as I deal with those. Um, and then, um, and then otherwise just, just, uh, also trying to work with, uh, some of the other contract attorneys on, on getting some of the things aligned for Colfax County. So we can all move forward together.
Thank you.
Vice Chair.
No questions. Thank you.
I have none either this time. Thank you, sir. ROC program.
Commissioners, I'll, I'll stand for any questions on that. This is part of, uh, the county gave a hundred thousand dollars to help support the ROC through North Central and hiring a program director, I guess, for that. Um, they're just required to do a quarterly report to the county. This is their report. They're currently wrapping up on their first home, um, and have two other homes here in Rattan on the pipeline. And this is to, uh, put them back on the market and sell them as workforce housing and currently, and I could be wrong on this, but I think Colfax County and North Central are the only ones working to, to, uh, do something about the housing issues that we have in the county. Angel Fire is doing their own thing, but, you know.
Yeah, Angel Fire has, uh, Commissioner Kern.
No questions. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, roads.
Yes, Commissioner, um, I'd like to apologize for getting our report in, uh, a little late. I believe you received it yesterday morning and that's my fault. Um, I would like to, uh, let you know, I don't know if you've had time to, to read our report, but, um, we did receive our new radio system in the road department. And I was sitting in my pickup at Blaster Gap and I actually could communicate with another road employee up in Black Lake on B one. And we've never had communication from here into the Moreno Valley at all. And I definitely would like to give a special thanks to Sheriff Baca and Tom Behill for, for doing that for the road department. It's a huge advancement. Uh, it, it's amazing and I, I really do appreciate that.
Any questions? Comments?
I have some, a couple are more so just an update for the commission regarding the roads. Um, we did, when we had our pre-planning meeting for the event center, we did have Mike Probine, uh, walk or go out there to the roads building and actually check out their Kwanzaa hut doors. This had been an issue for, for, uh, quite a while. Uh, so they're gonna pretty much get up a task order and, uh, give us a recommendation on, on the doors and how to get those repaired. Um, and also I think we are gonna start moving forward on another appropriation from the legislators about the skid steer. With, uh, there's a good skid steer with a bunch of attachments that came in that meet the qualifications that Glenn's looking for. So. And I think that's about it. We, uh, we did have a meeting with, uh, uh, to discuss mapping. Uh, but that's something I'll go over in our budget workshop.
I seen where you did repairs to your employee meeting room. So is the floor secure?
Um, yeah, some of the tiling had pulled up and they came back and, and reglued it.
Okay. So I was more worried about falling through the floor than what your tile.
It, it's a, it's a lot better than it was and it's functional.
And the bathroom is functional again too. Awesome.
Yeah.
All right, sure. That's all I had. Vice Chair.
Do we have a load limit?
Yeah. It was a booby trap.
I know it was.
I walked through it when they weren't there and boy, it didn't take me long to get out.
Yes. I knew exactly where the beams were.
I, I will give one update. I did, uh, work on congressional directed spending, uh, in an odd or about way. It was late, but I've worked with the Senator Luhon's o- o- office. And there was a great support for the airport, uh, snow removal equipment. So they agreed to use all the information I gave them last year. Uh, and they're gonna move forward with that. And I also pushed for our roads building on the congressional directed spending. So both of those did get submitted. And I'll let the commission know when I hear back.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, motion? Oh, that's just a discussion. All right, line item twenty-six. Close session pursuant to NMSA one nine seven eight one oh dash fifteen dash one eight. Limited personnel managers hiring a new Colfax County manager. I have a motion to go into closed session.
Full move. Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Trufio.
Yes.
Chairman Tatum.
Yes.
Eleven fifty one.
Eleven fifty one, discussion action, open session pursuant to NMSA nineteen seventy eight ten dash fifteen one eight. Limited to personal matters, hiring a new Colfax manager. Have a motion to come back in the session.
So move.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Trujillo.
Yes.
Chairman Taggum.
Yes. In the meeting was Vice Chair Kern, myself, Commissioner Trujillo, attorney. Soto and Danielle Avila.
Avila.
Avila, I never say it right, Avila. Uh, the only things discussed were the personnel matters. And we have limited our follow ups down to two county managers.
Kennedys.
Kennedys.
Yes, Kennedys.
Did you state the, nothing else discussed?
Yep, nothing else was discussed, yep.
We're good to go then.
All right, managers talk to.
Um. Just to let you know that we're currently uh on the employment count, I believe that the treasures has their office filled. We are now eight short in the jail and four short in the roads department. Um, then we could talk more about some of that when we have our budget workshop, the uh. I wanted to get the commission's preference, I'd like to move this finance budget and grants update uh may maybe just once a month. Instead of every meeting, uh I feel like we've gotten a good handle on most everything. And uh I still think it is nice to have this update and it can just come from internally. Uh. I did meet with the Mike Provine and Archillata Construction on the pre-planning meeting uh out at the event center. Um. I heard right now it's up in the air, but I believe it will probably be canceled, the rodeo um. There was miscommunication uh that occurred and also the issues that there is no water out at the event center or. Out there right now and they'd have to truck in water, um so I. Don't, I'm not a hundred percent on that, I'm waiting to hear back from the rodeos and see if anything, they will be back next year. Um, Supercross is still good to go and we we are planning with the construction crews to make sure. Uh, everything's out of the way and should be good to go, uh we should have water by that time. Uh, back to the arena, cause that's not till September, uh Ari gave the update on the congressional directed spending. Talked about the roads, I've been working with FAA, uh Jamie Fuller. And uh the consultants that the village of Angel Fire hired uh to wrap up some of the reporting and CIP. Uh. With the village or. With FAA, so we are working to get that completed uh. Do want to let the commission know Brianna Martinez did pass her CPO, I don't know if I mentioned that in the last meeting. Um. I will follow up to see if she has her certifications and work with Danielle Avila to transfer that uh that over. Uh, with all this recent weather, we did have leaks pretty much in every building. Um, I don't necessarily believe it was due to uh. Mostly just the wind, I'd say, we had a bunch of wind here, we had a leak here right above me to the left in the court in this room. Uh, we're thinking the water was getting blown up underneath the roof tiles and maybe that's somehow it came in. Um, the judicial center, I'm not sure if y'all seen that email, we had leaking over there as well.
The windows.
Yeah, the windows and everything else, uh so that building still is an issue. And we still have uh are having AC issues there, it's not necessarily working, but it's enough to circulate the cool air. That's kind of. My update.
Questions?
And it sounds from the description that those leaks at the judicial center are the ones that we have fought repeatedly over the years since the. That that building was built, basically.
Yep, we did uh get a water. Detection service with help with the Sheriff Baca here in the in the eighth judicial or within the office of the courts maintenance. Uh, that's in Fred's office now and I believe he made contact with him and they are, they will be coming up to detect water. In in the building to see where these leaks are coming from or or what.
Mm hmm.
Deal.
I believe that's that's all, is there any questions on anything that comes to mind?
Not on that yet, uh well. You answered the CPO deal, uh. Did you ever get any follow up from yours, mine and Soto's? Sure, the courthouse on all the law books that actually don't even fit.
No.
Jurisdiction and all that.
I have not.
I'm just um thinking of all, my God, from what we looked at, all the space.
Yeah.
Of stuff, uh and even the others that do fit our category if they're not going to use them or want them.
Yeah.
And my thought that was storage and empty a couple other rooms as we discussed at that time. Uh, to where we could have a closed session without having to go take over another room and all that.
Yeah, no, I, it is on my list, it's just a little, a little further down.
And uh was there any follow up on moving the server? Or if we decided it's going to be okay there as long as it's monitored and cleaned regular?
It's, it's okay for the time being where it's there, um ideally I would like to move it, uh where I don't know yet.
Yes.
Just where it's currently at takes out the use of a whole office.
Okay.
Um. But with that, I I did ask IT to change the code.
Yes, I visited with Tim about.
Just to keep it to to uh him and Amadeo, uh Brianna and Leroy. Um, myself and Alfonso.
Okay.
Um, and I guess Fred as well.
Who?
Fred maintenance.
Fred.
Okay, but this way it's a restricted asks access, we had issues when the power went out, people went in and kept resetting it.
Yeah, yeah, that needs to be a central person where. Cause yeah, I'm the only one who resets mine. Uh, Vice Chair Kern, do you have any questions, comments on this?
No, I don't have any questions or comment, the only thing that 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 I've been thinking about recently is that uh. We do need to look at updating our comprehensive plan, that's way overdue. Um. And there's funding available, um we talked to Mr. Hagerman about that um to pay for. For um updating that.
Yeah. I will do that. We will have on our next uh agenda, most likely the next one, the uh. Vector control. Okay, agreements.
Very clear.
I do look to increase pricing just enough to break even.
Yeah. Agreed.
Do we have a employee?
No, not yet, right now it's just Mr. Sandoval.
We never did do it last year, did.
We did.
Are we gonna advertise for it or?
Um, we haven't decided that just yet, but yes, I would like to.
Cause I know somebody that might be interested if we do.
Okay, great.
Okay, with that, no other questions, we'll go to Commissioners' docket. Vice Chair Kern.
That was it. You got it.
Do you have anything further as Commissioner?
Nope, not as a.
And I only already got all mine answered, but one, uh. This I guess goes to the sheriff and attorney uh on uh. Redoing the pet ordinance and all that, uh due to some recent. Complications within two of the air, two of my areas. Is it allowable to institute a leash law? In the unincorporated subdivisions. I do not want to isolate ranchers in open areas to their animals. Having to be confined. But as we do have subdivisions and so forth listed in the county. In the unincorporated area, I guess I would like follow up on if we can institute a leash law. Other than must be maintained by the owner. I don't know if that would be possible or not. And I apologize for not following up with y'all on everything, but. I've had a lot of technology problems last few days. Electricity crash, telephone crash, internet crash. Been kind of peaceful on that part, but anyway. And that's really the. Left on my commissioner deal. Uh, with that, if there's no questions, I would move for adjournment.
I will.
Oh, excuse me, delayed till one o'clock and we will begin budget hearing. Alright, sorry.
Recession, recess till one.
Recession till one.
Don't have to adjourn and then read the paper.
Yeah.
Now the, just real quick, on the, in the budget hearing though. That's a, that's more of a work session though, right?
Yes, it is a work session.
Yeah, so I would go ahead, I would go ahead and adjourn right now and then and then you can call on the.
Called work session.
The but yeah.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes. Commissioner Kern. Commissioner Trujillo. Chairman Taggum.
Yes, ma'am. We are adjourned.